Do I need to hit record on this? Yeah, okay. No, 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 you got, I was gonna say, you have two.
Yes, I know, to make up for the...
Okay, or whatever, yeah. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council Committee the whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Melwambwe.
Here.
Councilmember Inig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Council, uh, Mayor Renner.
Here, thank you. We're gonna go start with public comment and just wanna clarify that if you wanna get some immediate answers or responses or perhaps problems solved, please come to my mayor's open house on Friday before regular city council meetings. Those are certainly the possibilities where you can get interaction. Sometimes we have administrative staff and some other council members are there. So just let you know that. The public comment is for you to talk about whatever's on your mind for up to three minutes. Given that we have quite a few tonight, I would ask you to, especially if it's repetitious, to be as respectful as possible of others' abilities. We are going to start, I'll count it at 6:02, and that is, we start with Tim Jones and then Serena Fish and then we have Jim Waters. So again, Tim Jones, Serena Fish, Jim Waters, and I'll read these in groups of three. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim Jones and I'm with Midwest Electronics Gaming. I'm based in Ellsworth, Illinois, which is in McLean County. I've lived in McLean County my whole life. I went to Illinois State and I'm in the gaming business. And my understanding of what you wanna agree to or what the city is considering is that small businesses in this community that live here, that have lived here all their life, like me, you don't wanna give them the opportunity to grow. When the state has passed, as of this time next year, the state will have passed a tax that's equivalent to eighty percent of what you collect. And with fifteen dollar minimum wage coming and other costs, it is very unfair for those businesses if they're not allowed to be able to compete with other places such as large truck stops that you're gonna consider allowing to have ten games. So I'm not saying you shouldn't give it to them, I'm saying you should be fair and everyone should have a fair shot at it. And then someone that works hard, that lives here, that spends their money here, that buys cars here, that buys homes here, that employs people here, can afford to continue to run their businesses, run them properly, run them efficiently and make a living. Thank you.
Thank you. Serena Fish, Jim Waters and Peter Pontius.
Hi, Serena Fish, 909 Westwood. I was not going to speak tonight, but when I walked in here and saw what I saw, I have to say something. I'm extremely upset by the shirt that is being worn by one of our councilpeople, Jeff, and to me it is very inflammatory and the shirt itself is much more racist than what it says on it. And I don't think he should be allowed to sit at a council chamber desk wearing it. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Jim Waters, Peter Pontius and Tom Hubbard.
Thank you. I'm Jim Waters with the VFW here in Bloomington and part of the reason I'm here is in reference the gaming issues that are probably gonna be decided on tonight or at the next meeting. As the VFW, we're not individually owned. The organization owns the actual building and the business. We've been in Bloomington here for ninety-nine years. May of next year, we will celebrate one hundred years right here in this town. Our thing with the gaming is it helps us keep our building open. It helps us keep everything available for that next generation of veterans who haven't come into the VFW fold at this time. And we're also one of the organizations that, we use that money not only to repair the building, keep it upgraded, provide new services, but we also use the money to donate to veterans' programs and a multitude of other community charities right here in Bloomington Normal. So it's not like we're putting the money in our pocket and walking away with it. It stays right here in Bloomington, other than the veterans' programs that we have to support local, state and national level. So one of the things is that we wanna keep it here. If I don't have the money coming in, it will be harder for us to keep our place open. And I hate saying it, that at the moment, there's a lot of VFWs, American Legions and other veterans' organizations over the next five years that will probably disappear because they can't afford to stay open. As Mr. Jones mentioned about the actual fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage that's coming in 2025, that's added expenses that we have to go with. Right now, I have four full-time employees and eleven part-time employees. I don't want anything to happen to those folks. I want them to be here as long as they want. I want them to be here in Bloomington as long as they want to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Peter Pontius and then, let's see, Tom Hubbard and Tony Worgo.
Good evening, my name is Peter Pontius. I'm the Director of Loss Prevention and Compliance for BMB Amusement of Illinois. We are the only terminal operator located within Bloomington Normal and I'm a longtime resident of Bloomington Normal as well. I'd like to speak, of course, to the video gaming that's on the agenda for this evening. I met with several of the council members in the last couple of weeks to discuss it as well. The key theme seems to be the number of games in each location and, as well as the number of licensed establishments in Bloomington. As a lot of you know, we operate the Pilot Truck Stop in Bloomington, which is a large, considered a large truck stop, but we also have concerns for the other terminal operators and the other licensed establishments in Bloomington as to limiting their games when several of the locations that already have less than five will not be increasing their number of games per conversations I've had with some of the other terminal operators in the room. So the key thing is to be fair to all the terminal operators and all the licensed establishments and allow them to grow as needed to accommodate the number of players they may have. The economics will determine who adds games and who doesn't add games. You might see what comes down to not a change in the number of games in Bloomington other than at the large truck stops. So I would encourage the council to be fair to all the parties involved and allow them to grow as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Tom Hubbard, Tony Worgo and Loretta Gent.
Thank you, my name is Tom Hubbard. Recently, we sent a letter to every one of the council and the mayor. My son wrote it and unfortunately, the only person to reach back to us, you know, requesting additional information was Donna Bowlin, which I appreciate. I've had a liquor license in this town for over forty years and in forty years, I've never, ever had a problem with the police, with underage, with gambling, with anything. And most of that time, I've had two liquor licenses in this town. What I don't really understand is, over the last forty years, on several occasions to several councils, several mayors, we have came up and asked for a cap on liquor licenses. But that's always been a no. We can't do that. We have to let the free market rule. Well, now here we are with another issue, which is supporting the very small independent businessman in this town with liquor licenses. Why does, why do the rules change now? Why can't the market rule for these video poker machines? We took a hit with smoking, a terrible hit. There's many places that almost, I almost went down because that was very, very expensive. And I don't understand why, it's okay for the truck stops to have ten. It was explained to me because this is a wash. They come to town, you get your five percent, they leave town. No, the big check goes to some corporation out of town where my big check comes to me and I reinvest it right here in town. I reinvest it by hiring people, by those people going out and spending it in town, by everything else. But you can't, this is like the pot calling the kettle black. You can't say it's, let the market dictate for liquor licenses, but we're not gonna let the market dictate for these video poker machines. Why not? Somebody has to answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tony Worgo, Loretta Gent and then Grant Jones.
I just wanna address really the continuity of the proposal that's set out there. A lot of, lot of the rhetoric that goes out says like video gaming is so evil and so hard on the community, but right now, and I apologize to the gentleman with the pilot station and as mentioned by Mr. Hubbard as well, is that money goes, goes away from this town. But we're, we're allowing places that already currently generate the highest, highest revenue to then double their, their, their number of total machines allowed and yet, you're okay with that proliferation of gambling while, while you're limiting the establishments like myself and others that, you know, again, reinvest, you're gonna hear this over and over again, we reinvest our money in this community. We, when we need to have work done on our equipment, when we have work done on our stores, whether we are remodeling or whatever, that money comes right back to the community. We hire local, we, we get local contractors. Those things aren't, aren't able to be done unless we are, you know, able to generate revenue. In, in fact, you're really giving a competitive advantage to these larger establishments when, who already have a competitive advantage simply by the fact that they generate the revenue, that they do, they're twenty-four hours a day. We don't have that ability to be twenty-four hours a day. It's pushing people to those, those establishments that unfortunately, we can't compete with that, we can't tell anyone that they can come twenty-four hours a day to our, to our establishment. It, it's really contrary to the idea that's presented in the agenda today that we're trying to, you know, grow a local economy and you're trying to build a strong relationship with the businesses. This isn't building a strong relationship with the local businesses that provide jobs to our local people. Now granted, the, the larger truck stops and that, they, they do provide that, it's just, it's not really fair to allow one thing and then not allow the other. I guess, in, in really, you, you don't want to believe that you're trying to be moral police in this. People are going to gamble whether or not you, you think that they're going to. That's, that's indicated by the fact that when the video gaming law came into effect in the state of Illinois, most of the revenue from the riverboats then started getting dispersed locally. Those people were coming, going to the riverboats from here before. So now they're doing it here, generating revenue for us here, so then we can then, instead of a large corporation like the Boyd Gaming Company over in Peoria, they're not spending their money in Bloomington, but we are. And I guess the last thing that I would have to say is, it's, and I guess, Mr. Mathie, you might be the only person on the council that can understand this, is of your local business, if this council were to tell you that you couldn't have more space in your store, but they were going to allow Walmart and Target to sell the same product that you sold at a greater volume, would that be fair? I answered that as no.
Thank you. Excuse me, next is Loretta Gent, Grant Jones and then Gary Lambert.
Loretta Gent, President of the McLean County WCTU and the Normal WCTU and a local resident for fifty-plus years. The Gaming, Illinois Gaming Board reports that Bloomington has two hundred and thirty-eight video gambling machines operating in fifty-one establishments. This past July only, area residents lost one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents in gambling machines. In a list of communities with the most video gambling losses, Bloomington is number six statewide. I'm not too proud of that. Remember, in July only, area residents have lost one million, three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. It's a known fact that people who can afford to gamble the least are the ones that are more tempted to gamble. That's depending, I believe, on the weaknesses of others for our finances. I think we're better people than that. There are some projects surely that we could do without in order to pay for what is needed the most. Concerning the request to create a cannabis task force to make recommendations on legalize, legalizing recreational use of marijuana, I have brought along a few, a one-page fact sheet on reasons to oppose and ban marijuana businesses to share with the city council. And I have a few extras in case there's those here that would like a copy. And thank you.
Okay, and you can distribute those.
I can do that? Thank you.
Yes, or you can give them to Mr. Gleason and he can, we'll pass them around.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me, for taking the time to consider the gambling question and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, Grant Jones and then Gary Lambert.
Hi, I'm Grant Jones and I work with Midwest Electronics Gaming. I just wanna reiterate what everybody else has kind of said about the local dollars. I am for a fair playing field and I would love to hear when you guys do discuss this on what the thought process was behind on excluding the local business people here. You know, these are your neighbors, they own restaurants, bars and other establishments. For example, Parkview Inn just spent one point five million and, and you were able to give him machines and I know he's thrilled about that. If at some point in time, he gets busy where he has five people playing and a sixth person comes and they can't play, they're gonna go to the quick and easy, they're gonna go to the pilot and those dollars don't stay in this community. And so what I'd ask for is, is what was said earlier, is not necessarily keep it at five, but if you're gonna do something and add to the large truck stops, at least add to the local people too, so they have an opportunity to compete. It's, it's, you know, Joe's Pub is a great example. You know, they, they redid their whole area and they want an opportunity to compete. You know, Cadillac Jacks spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and you're gonna allow a quick and easy to get ten machines where you're not gonna allow him to get six machines. You know, the VFW, they're right down the street from there. If they're ever busy, how is it fair that they don't have an extra machine when the quick and easy down the street is gonna be able to get ten machines? You know, I just want local, 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 I want all the dollars to stay here as long as possible and, you know, the, the two large truck stops on seventy-four on Market Street, you know, those dollars go to Cleveland, Ohio, they go to Knoxville, Tennessee, they leave this community. And so anything we can do to keep it here, you know, that is, that is absolutely what I hope you do. And I would ask that, I would like to know everybody's opinion when we do discuss this and the, at the next, at the rest of this meeting, is why we think that it's okay or what we're thinking or what the mindset is of, of, of not having that balanced playing field. So I'd, I'd love to hear from all of you, at least when we, when you talk about it at the, you know, in the ten-minute discussion session on, on what the thought process is on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gary Lambert.
I don't know if this council has a code regarding decorum or not. If you don't, I would suggest that you adopt one. It started out with flags that have nothing to do with city business being displayed. And I don't know what Mr. Crable's intent was with his shirt. If it was to cause some controversy, congratulations, you succeeded. What's next? Are we gonna allow individuals to start waving national flags other than our flag, the United States? How about the Confederate flag? Is that acceptable here? This council is, in my opinion, going downhill. I've got plenty of time left, so I'll go just a little bit further. It was reported that there was a document, I believe it was from the New York Times, that went down to their editorial writers and columnists. Up until recently, it was Russia, 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 concentrate on that. And the latest memorandum that came down was, drop that, now it's going to be racist, racist, racist. And in my humble opinion, I have found those that accuse others of such a tactic are usually guilty of themselves. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move along from there to the consideration of our minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there, excuse me, are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion then to approve them as presented? So moved by Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Crable, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Black. If everyone will go ahead and, please go ahead and vote. Okay, all right. The, is it present? Okay. Oh, there we go. Motion carries nine to zero, there are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk, the minutes will stand. We're gonna go ahead and move then to the McLean County Regional Planning Commission and their short-range transit plan and I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our city manager. We have about twenty minutes there and then fifteen minutes. Given our, the nature of our tight schedule tonight, if we go beyond the minutes, I'm gonna ask us for a special extension. Not, not for you, I'm talking about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, Mayor and Council, we have two presentations tonight that are, you know, in large part about the transit discussion in the community. McLean County Regional Planning is going to provide a presentation, Teresa is going to do that and I think Vasu presented this very similar to the town of Normal a couple of months ago. It's something that they had prepared. I think we have ten minutes for discussion and I believe twenty minutes for you, is that right? Okay, and I'm gonna turn it over to Teresa. Thank you.
All right, hi, everyone. Good evening, my name is Teresa Anderson. I'm the Assistant Planner at the McLean County Regional Planning Commission and tonight I'll be presenting on behalf of everyone in MCRPC who helped create this first short-range transit plan done in decades. Back in the seventies and early eighties, when it was still the Bloomington Normal public transportation system, we did these short-range transit plans and currently, we still work very closely with them and they work on a lot of our projects, or we work on a lot of projects with them, but we're excited to pick back up on the short-range transit planning with them. So to start, what is a short-range plan? The short-range plan or transit plan is to bridge between the operational day-to-day work that Connect Transit does and the long-range plans and goals that they have. So this accounts for the initiatives that are underway as well as the financial feasibility and just looking at, you know, what will help us get to those long-range goals. As the, as MCRPC, we really worked to become an objective third party. We took as much raw data as we could and did the analysis that way, not so much with Connect Transit watching, just taking the facts and reporting them to this, to, well, the main audience was the Connect Transit Board as well as the staff. But it's intended to serve as a, as a guide basically, as, as they go on in how to get closer to those long-term goals. So the process we undertook was to review those long-range plans, both that Connect Transit has created and all over the community, transit is considered in a lot of different plans, including both of the comprehensive plans for Bloomington and Normal, as well as the long-range transportation plan done by us in two thousand and eighteen and the Connect Transit Comprehensive Operational Analysis adopted in two thousand and fifteen. And we both, and then we also reviewed a lot of different, several different community and Connect Transit initiatives, to the extent that it related to the plan and, as I said, we used all the raw data that Connect Staff could provide us, as well as data sets that we created for our comprehensive plans and national data sets such as the census. We also used spatial analysis to show different, how basically Connect Transit works around the community and transit propensity, which we'll explain later, as well as the transit corridors and a look at the bus stops and what they look like today. So, and then we created recommendations based off of all of that analysis and the review of plans and projects that are currently happening. So we're not gonna go very deep into all the analysis, 'cause of course, that would take forever, but I will, we're gonna show you a few examples. So what we started out with is actually the survey that Connect Transit conducted in the spring of two thousand and eighteen and what you're looking at is a map of origin and destination data that that survey collected, as well as that survey... that that survey collected, as well as that survey-collected demographic data of the people taking the survey, and satisfaction. So while we didn't really use the satisfaction part of the survey, that was more beneficial for Connect, what we used is to kind of take this as a representation of Connect ridership. We felt really comfortable doing that, because that map shows that there, the people who took the survey are coming and going from all over Bloomington-Normal, and that bar graph you're looking at is comparing overall ridership to the percentage of surveys taken on each route. And as you can see, it matches up pretty well, which is a very conscious effort made by Connect Transit and the consultant that they worked with. And what we can, what we were able to glean from that survey with over, with almost 1,200 responses, was that transit riders are young, with 47% of riders under the age of 24, and 31% of riders are students. And the communities of color make up majority of ridership, with 49% African-American riders, while only 10% of African-Americans make up the community as a whole. And riders are low-income, with 92% of rider incomes under $50,000, and over 50% with incomes under $15,000. Also, 55, over 55% of those who are taking Connect Transit and took the survey do not have a license, and nearly half of those respondents have been using Connect Transit for over three years. So looking at that data, that is a very transit-dependent population that Connect is serving. So next, we'll look at the transit propensity that I had mentioned before. This was our big GIS analysis that we did, that was kind of the basis of all of our analysis. We purposely did not use any current transit data to put into the propensity model. What propensity really means is the likelihood that people will use transit. And we didn't want to, we didn't want to use current data to skew that. We wanted it to be a really objective look at where transit needs are in the community, and then compare that to what exists. So how this propensity model was created is it, it's based off of 10 variables, nine of which are local data sets that we collected in our office, and one being the census to look at job density. But where, what we found based on national research and verified by the survey ridership, showing who's taking the bus, is that the populations that generally tend to use transit are students, people of lower incomes, people with disabilities, and the areas that people tend to use transit in, which is dense housing areas, like student apartments and dorms, as well as subsidized housing units and mobile homes. Also, connect mobility pickups and drop-offs, for those who are approved to use Connect Transit, or Connect Mobility Services, where they're asking to be picked up from and dropped off at, as well as property assessments and senior tax exemptions. Now, we also looked at where people need to go. So that's grocery stores, medical centers and hospitals, and jobs. So these are all things that were taken, and then basically a heat map came out of this, counting the number of instances of each of those, each of those items. And so the darker the color, the more transit propensity is. And as you can see, generally speaking, this transit ridership, or this propensity matches up really well with how transit routes are currently lined up. So then, using this propensity data, we were able to use it as a base for the rest of our analysis. Looking at just fixed route data, the raw ridership combined with their service schedule and timetables, we were able to find ridership per hour, both just overall and during different frequency changes, as well as overall route performance. These are kind of where we get to do the smaller, you know, actions that make big influences. So those three, I'm sorry, excuse me, those three to five-year changes, that'll help get to that bigger goal of providing transit to everyone that they can. We also used their Fairbox data to get a better idea of who was riding and how they were paying. The main takeaways we found from this analysis was that fixed route ridership is growing, and that routes with 30-minute or better frequency throughout the day typically perform better than those with more than 30 minutes or varied frequencies. Also, the silver and the purple route are the only ones that change frequency but do not have higher ridership during their peaks and during their off-peaks. So just these areas that there are small adjustments can make improvements. And as well, that five out of 15 routes account for 70% of all ridership. So there's definitely a lot of condensed ridership in the community. And then from fixed route, we go to mobility users. Mobility is the service that is required by the ADA to provide for, it picks up and drops off directly where the user needs, and they have to get approved by their medical provider and live within one-fourth of a mile from the fixed route service. And we used a lot of the same data to analyze this information, but what we had for mobility that we didn't have for fixed route, was a very in-depth database created by Lifeville, who for three years was in a contract with Connect Transit from, until, up until this year. And they had a list of every single person who had have been approved to take mobility. And we were able to kind of take that list and filter out the people who are actually actively using mobility, and see, you know, as much as we could without, you know, breaking any laws, but we were able to kind of find the disabilities that were faced with and that Connect Transit is faced with in trying to provide the best service they can. And the demand for this is only going way up. It has more than doubled in seven years, and based on current data, there's a possible additional 30% increase in mobility trips by the mid-2020s. And what makes this really difficult is that every single person, what we found from looking at that database of users, they all have different needs, and that makes, you know, every single trip is a different trip. So it costs a lot more than fixed route, and it's a lot more specialized. Another thing we've looked at is the funding, or lack thereof. So the report contains a brief discussion of the federal and state fund types and their limitations, but by looking at it, you can see that I.D.O.P., which is unfortunately named, meaning Downstate Operating Assistance Program, is what comes from the Illinois State, and that is the majority of our funding. And we're actually not even using the amount that we, or that Connect would be able to use from these D.O.P. funds, because there's not enough local fund to match, to get that full ability out of the, of the D.O.P. funding. And what's happening is Connect is having to dip into federal operating funds to pay for, to pay for the capital expenditures, such as bus stops and buses, and things that would, they would like to be able to spend more money on, or having to go to operational funds. There's a much better breakdown in pages 27 and 28 of the report, but overall, there's an instability of funding. D.O.P. funds have been pretty stable over the last couple of years, but you never know. As well as federal funds, these are things that we're not in control over. So diversifying that funding source would be definitely a, a short-term goal to keep in mind for Connect. And something that's not necessarily short-term, but is something that a lot of, that helps a lot of these transit providers, is becoming a transit district, which Connect is not. So after all of these analyses, we're, we had a couple of different findings and recommendations. Something that we found is that ridership definitely is growing, and that these riders are transit-dependent, so that means that this population is growing. And, you know, Connect Transit is serving this population, but the very low-income riders are paying a higher price to ride the bus. And we found this because that bulk price of a bus pass at the beginning of the month is not something that the low-income riders can afford, so they're paying day-to-day, which ends up being a lot more at the end of the month. So something that we recommend for that is called fare capping, which would allow a person to pay up until what the pass would cost, and then after that, would not need to pay any longer. Or something, the universal access program is something that Connect has with a few of the businesses in town, expanding that, using, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce to local businesses, small businesses, and the retailers who are employing these people who are dependent on ridership. And then the mobility serves the most vulnerable riders, and it's definitely the most expensive to provide. So, working to coordinate that effort as much as possible, concentrating on that, to get people back on fixed route, if that's what they want, by providing, you know, safe sidewalks and safe bus stops, to put riders back on the buses that they want to be on. Also, working with the, the community to create a transit-supportive development community. This isn't transit-oriented development, as it's kind of popular in the urban speak, but, that, which is more focused on light rail or bus rapid transit. Transit-supportive development is looking at our comprehensive plans, which talk about condensed, condensed development. So instead of building on the edges where transit, it would cost a lot more and become a lot less efficient to go to, building near transit, keeping transit in mind when doing things like resurfacing, capital improvements, you know, thinking about bus stops and sidewalks, and, you know, safe crosswalks when, when Bloomington would be resurfacing a road anyway. Just keeping this all in mind. The map that shows is major and minor transit routes. So these are roads that especially should be kept in mind when, when looking to, to do those improvements on. It's not segment level, it is the transit route, the ridership distributed along the whole route, but it's still very clear where you see the highest riderships are happening, and those roads that can be adjusted to help out transit and create very reliable service that everyone will want to use. As well as complete streets, so again, creating those streets that are safe for pedestrians to get on and off a bus on, to ride their bike to the bus. And education and outreach, so educating this community on the benefits of transit, on how things are funded, on, you know, keeping this conversation, it's obviously been a very hot topic in the community, it's the last month and a half, and just keeping that very, you know, lively and keeping people educated on what's happening and why it's important to do all these things. And then next, we have the bus stops that we looked at. Language that we used in the plan a lot is high-frequency bus stops, which are bus stops that are serviced at least every 30 minutes, so bus stops that you can kind of count on having service all day at, and accessible stops. This is not ADA accessible, this is just generally accessible within a quarter-mile of a walk, so that doesn't seem like a burden to walk to or to get to. So using the boarding and the lighting data, we analyzed the bus stop to see where ridership is distributed around the community, which is one of the maps that you see above. And so this kind of helps look at where resources need to be allocated to, or where they might not be as important. And as well as we looked at bus stops that have 15 or more boardings per day, which is Connect Transit's policy about updating with infrastructure. And so, out of 480 bus stops total, 67 have 15 or more passenger boardings a day, and are eligible for a shelter, but only two, or two-thirds do not have a shelter for a variety of reasons. So finding those priority bus stops to update that are used frequently and could definitely use that infrastructure, is just keeping an eye on that, that data. And for mobility, this is something that, again, education is very important about why, you know, how it's funded and the constraints we have, and there is a lot of data out there. We have, you know, we have this, the database that Lifeville is creating, as well as all these businesses, they just know their people. So, finding those places that people are going to a lot, that need mobility services, and coordinating trips, as well as coordinating developments, if you, if people are knowing that, you know, a high school or a retirement community is being built, just, you know, finding those places that are convenient and coordinating that effort to help people get onto the fixed route, or help coordinate that mobility service. So it's not quite as expensive, and it's more convenient for everyone. And only 19% of riders are accounting for 46% of all trips. So it's very clear to us that, you know, this effort is a condensed effort. These are people that we know, that we can track, and that we can kind of work out that schedule of, of how, how can we help you the best way. And then lastly, these are things that we, we looked at, because of course they're hot topics of autonomous vehicles and demand-responsive transit and ride-sharing, and these are not things that would necessarily fit in the Bloomington-Normal area in the next three or five years, but in technology years, that's a lot. So definitely keeping an eye on these, and seeing how they develop in other communities, and seeing how we can retrofit that to Bloomington-Normal is important, but Connect should definitely work on improving the, the data they already have, the technology they already have, so data management and analytics. All this stuff that we found was just from local data and data they collect. So, keeping that all managed and partnered with us, or, or on their own, just managing that data and finding all these patterns, and finding these easy places to kind of shift resources and create, create a better transit system. And then next up, we definitely see, you know, this will go to, through the public process that Connect needs, and we definitely see it, the opportunity for community engagement in all of these steps. But that's where we're at for now.
Thank you. And thanks for coming in under budget.
I'm impressed. Sorry if I spoke too fast.
Questions? Counselmember Black?
Thank you. Thank you. Tim, what is it you're hoping to hear from us tonight to help with next steps?
I think the biggest thing was just providing the information to council. This fits, this presentation and the Connect Transit presentation fit into what the Connect Transit Working Group is doing. So I didn't necessarily have an expectation that there would be comment or an opinion, just wanted to get as much information as I could to council for the day that we're going to have a working group report.
Gotcha. If you can go back to the slide with the recommendations, real quick, I apologize. I just, I know you're not really looking for an opinion. One, one more back, I think it was. Alternative modes such as scooters, I am adamantly opposed to scooters in this community. I hate those damn things. And if, as long as I'm sitting up here, I will vote against anything that comes back with those scooters.
Get you now. Go.
Okay. Don't hold back. Tell us what you think. Counselmember Bray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for your presentation today. I just have a couple of questions about, just getting a little more context about, about your scope of your study. So, one question that we frequently are asked, and that we often have on our minds, is the size of our buses. Whether or not the bus size is, I guess, the recommended size for the service of our population, for the number of ridership at a particular location, you know, whether or not our roads are equipped to carry these heavy loads of our, of our buses. We hear about that. Also, the inability of the size of the buses that we currently have to get into some neighborhoods, creating then bus stops that are on peripheries of neighborhoods rather than within the neighborhood. So, just wanted to know, and then we get asked a lot of questions about size of the current buses, and there's proposals to replace with a similar size. So, is this something that your group studied, or have an ability to study? And could you share?
So unfortunately, we're not engineers, so we don't, we don't look at the, you know, the load capacity or anything like that. Unfortunately, that's something I'm going to have to pass on to Martin, as far as maintenance and the cost of that. That's not necessarily something out of the scope of what we're looking at. We're looking at more of people-focused data and how people are being moved around the community, and less about, you know, the exact facility that they're being moved within.
I thank you for that. Yeah, I wasn't looking really for an engineering opinion, but whether or not you'd seen studies out there that had recommendations about the size of, of a vehicle, or the type of vehicles that would service a population of our size and ridership of our size.
Unfortunately, we've been working on this for about a year, so that wasn't necessarily an issue, that was coming up in the community when we originally started, so it wasn't something that we included in this plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think.
You've used the acronym F-M-L-M. Can you say again what that is?
First mile, last mile. So how you're getting to the bus stop and how you're getting from, when you get off the bus, back home.
Talk, talk us through that a little bit. First mile, last mile.
Yeah, so your first mile to the bus stop, and then your last mile home from the bus stop. Like, when I was talking about the accessible bus stops, being one-fourth of a mile is typically the national accepted distance to walk, that, you know, a person will walk to a bus stop instead of just getting an Uber or something. So the first mile, last mile solutions are something that a lot of the big cities are looking at, autonomous vehicles, or Uber, or these scooters, to help kind of fix that gap between your house and the bus, and then the bus and wherever you're going next.
Thank you. That's all. That's all I have.
See, Counselmember Bowlin, and then Mila Wambly.
Yeah, I want to thank you for all this data that you're providing. And what I really appreciate is that it's regional collaboration, and local, regional data, done by a local person, because I think that's very beneficial. I don't think it's beneficial to bring in people from out of town, that are not familiar with the demographics and the, the needs that we have, the special needs that we have within this community. So I very much appreciate, and I read the entire.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Mila Wambly?
Just a quick question. I was curious if there is ever, if your office has ever undertaken a, a conversation with the largest employers here in town, to try to find out what are the impediments to their employees using transit? Because I do know, in my, in my particular case, the reason why, I, I'd love to. But when I, when I get to work, I have many other things that might come up, you know, picking up the kids for something, doctor's appointments, and things like that. So I was curious if there was a conversation like that, and, and try to find a way to, to work together to, to, to make sure that people have options.
Right.
Once they get to work.
Absolutely. So, we've actually started So we've actually started that effort on the mobility side. Like I said, when we were looking at all these places that mobility people are being dropped off, we kind of found those, those employers that were nearby and had conversations with them, and it's definitely an ongoing conversation and something that is a recommendation here of both us and Connect Transit reaching out to those employers of mobility riders. But definitely, that's something that we'd like to expand to fixed route and everyone of just seeing what the barriers are to taking transit and helping close those.
I can think of two really large employers.
I bet we can do.
It'd be beneficial to have that conversation with.
Thank you, yeah.
Counselmember Emy.
Thank you, as everyone has said for your thoughtful report, we all like a lot of data.
Yeah.
You, you talked about the difference between transit-oriented development versus transit-supportive development.
Yes.
And it sounds like what we have here is more transit-supportive, but you also talked about metrics about, you know, high-frequency, on-time, increasing ridership, perhaps increasing ridership for more and more of the community in ways that were referred to, you know, is it convenient? Does it make sense? Does it take a long time? Versus making sure that we're also serving our most vulnerable citizens, and I too read the report and noted that that projection is also in part due to the projected aging population in the community, and so it's something to really pay attention to.
Exactly.
Can these two things exist simultaneously? Again, your opinion, is there a way to do both?
Sorry, to do both?
To, to be both, to be oriented towards the sort of, the high-frequency increased ridership and to also be oriented towards those who require more specialized services, even more expensive services?
I think absolutely, they go hand in hand. When we talk about mobility and coordinating those efforts, that's because we want to, I mean, of course, we want to serve those people as best we can, but also it saves money to, to, you know, those mobility trips cost a lot more than a fixed route trip. So as much as we can coordinate that, as much as we can help people on mobility who want to ride fixed route but just can't get there or don't feel secure in that, as much as we can transfer that over, it's benefiting the system overall because it's saving money, it's putting money that we can do towards bus stops, towards buses, newer buses, and the more that we are, you know, even if we're concentrating our efforts on those that are vulnerable, it's better for the system overall. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselmember Crable.
Thank you, Teresa, I also did read the report, and I did enjoy it. A couple of things I wanted to highlight, if I could. Initially, the report stated Connect Transit should focus on serving those that are dependent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Also, you talked about the fare caps, right?
Right.
Potentially, could that also be monthly passes?
Yes.
To be part of that?
Well, so that's, basically, since they can't afford the monthly pass at the beginning of the month, they would essentially take the trips until you pay for a monthly pass and then it's capped.
There's a mention in here that nearly 75% of high-frequency bus stops are located in low and moderate-income census blocks?
Yes.
Do you have any data on how many census blocks don't have high-frequency bus stops?
I believe all of them at least have high-frequency bus stops. The majority, there's only a few routes that don't ever touch 30 minutes during the day, so I would have to double-check that, but I'm pretty sure every single one at least has one high-frequency bus stop.
And then improving, you, the report mentioned improving bus stop facilities and their accessibilities as a priority?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Let's see, would you agree that having more bus stops that are ADA-compliant will increase ridership?
Definitely.
And would you agree that having bus stops in areas like, you know, closer to healthcare facilities or within high-density areas, I forget kind of the term that Council and Bray mentioned with regard to, like, say, inside a mobile home park?
Right.
Type of thing? Would that increase ridership as well?
Definitely.
Also, would, is it important to have access to schools so that, you know, parents can go to conferences that are transit-dependent?
Yes, absolutely.
It's mentioned on page 20 that shifting mobility riders to fixed route system was once a specific policy target? Do you know why it's not a specific policy target now? Does that mean it, when you say once, or when the report says once?
Right.
What does that mean?
So unfortunately, my colleague did that chapter and so, and she's on vacation right now, so.
I understand.
Not something I'm an expert on.
Okay. All right, those are all the questions I had. Thank you so much.
Yeah. All right.
Very much appreciate your help and efforts and fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we will move on to item 5B, which is Presentation Discussion of an Update Regarding Connect Transit. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason, who's going to kind of introduce Mr. Thorne and where we're going from here. We have 25 minutes budgeted for that and approximately 15-minute council discussion. So, Mr. Gleason.
I'm going to talk real quick so we can get to the meat of the presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, if not identical, very similar to the PowerPoint presentation for the Town of Normal that was shared with you guys a couple of months ago. We're going to have three that are actually going to be presenting. We've got Isaac Thorne, the General Manager, Martin Glaze, the COO, and our very own Trustee, Judy Buchanan, who is our representative on the Connect Transit Board. So guys.
Good evening. We're hoping to be able to keep this to 25 minutes, but good evening, Mr. Mayor Ritter and City Council, City of Bloomington Council, thank you for allowing Connect Transit to speak tonight. With me, I have Trustee Judy Buchanan, Chairman Mike McCurdy is here, and also Chairman, or Vice Chairman Ryan at White House. And then tonight, we'll be speaking, Martin Glaze, Chief Operating Officer. Me and him are going to be talking about information from our ridership trends, costs, types of service, Medicaid program, fares, bus stops, and upcoming projects. And then Trustee Judy Buchanan is going to provide an update on the Connect Transit, Connect to the Future Working Group. So Teresa did a great job presenting the short-range transit plan. I am going to highlight some of, some of that. So as Teresa had said, our riders are typically younger, they're 47% of respondents are under the age of 24 years old, and 31% of respondents are students. Our riders are transit-dependent. Majority of our customers make less than $15,000 a year, and bus service is predominantly serving transit-dependent populations. 70% of the non-students are employed full-time or part-time, and these customers are earning and spending money locally here in our economy. So I want to go a little bit more detail in terms of the transit propensity map. I think this is a great visual representation of, on the left, you have our transit propensity map that Teresa talked about, the 10 attributes that went into that. And then on the right, you have our routes overlaid on top of that, that map. So our routes align pretty well with the transit propensity map, and again, we're serving a very transit-dependent population. And as Teresa said as well, within the bus network, 66, actually, I think, Counselmember Crable mentioned that 66% of the bus stops are serviced at least every 30 minutes at some point during the day, service day, and 75% of these stops are located in low and moderate-income census blocks. So this graph is a visual representation of Connect Transit ridership, average national peers, and then also regional peers. So on the top right-hand corner is Connect Transit's ridership. The blue indicates, indicates, indicates an increase, and the orange indicates a decrease. In the middle is the national peer agencies, and then the bottom right-hand corner is our average regional peer agencies. Those are agencies here in Illinois. So since 2016, FY 2016, ridership nationally has decreased, and it's been on a pretty steady decline, both regionally and nationally. Connect Transit was able to buck that trend, and FY 18 and 19, we've seen increases, 97% since fiscal year 2008, while national agency peers have decreased ridership in the last few years, last four consecutive years. Reason for that trend is the gas prices, and starting in FY 15, obviously decreased from the highs of $4 to $3 a gallon all the way to $1.26. Now they're somewhere between $250 and $275. Again, we added frequency, starting in FY 17, more frequent bus network, more reliable net bus network, something that our riders have asked in the rider survey over the last two years, and they're responding to riding the bus more often. This is our transfer trends and passenger trips. So this graph represents transfers as a percentage of ridership. This is from FY 13 to FY 19. We made the route restructure in FY 17, and we saw a decrease in the transfers as a percentage of ridership over the last three years. And then that 5.79%, that represents the percentage of 2.4 million rides we provided last year, comes out to be roughly 139,000 transfers were part of our ridership last year. And then there's a lot of talk about unlinked passenger trips and how we count those. FDA requires us to count passenger trips the same way all across the United States. Where at Chicago, Los Angeles, we count passengers every time they board, no matter how many vehicles they use to travel from their origin to their destination. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Martin Glaze.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll try and be quick because otherwise I could take this whole time. So our fixed route ridership was just under 2.5 million in FY 19. That was our third largest. So that was our third-largest ridership year in the history of Connect Transit. When you break down the operating cost, it's just about $4 per ride on the fixed route, and that comes out to $90.59 per hour for the fixed route. When we look at Connect Mobility, we have 90,515 passenger trips, that comes out to $27 a ride and $78.32 per revenue hour. With the fixed route, now those service hours, those revenue hours are fixed. So when we budget for that, we know exactly how many hours we're providing and what it costs. Every ride that we provide on that bus makes it more efficient. That cost per ride goes lower and lower as we provide more rides. Overall, on an average, we provide 22.6 trips per revenue hour. Now, per revenue hour means one bus running for one hour. So if we're running 20 buses, that's 20 hours of service. So every single one of those buses during that hour would have 22 and a half rides on each one. That's on average. The Connect Mobility, the unaudited cost of $27 is about $5 less than it was last year. So if that number holds, we've decreased our expenses almost 20% on that service. That comes out to about $500,000. Revenue hours for Connect Mobility, they are not fixed. The cost per hour is pretty fixed, we have some backend work we can do. However, every single ride that's scheduled on Connect Mobility adds to our overall cost. So if we provide no rides, it doesn't cost us anything. We have 100 rides, it costs us what 100 rides cost. This is much less efficient service because you are transporting less people. So you're taking less people further. Your drive time is longer and you have less people onboard. Door-to-door service is going to cost more. All right. So Connect Mobility as a service, as Teresa had mentioned earlier, the increase has been significant year-over-year. So since 2011, we have not seen a year without an increase of usage. The big thing to note is that in FY 19, we actually saw an increase of only 1.3%. It is our lowest increase ever. Basically, this breaks down to about 250 rides that we're providing on a daily basis and about 7,000 to 8,000 rides monthly. So where does the funding come from for the increase in these rides? We don't know. We kind of make that up, and that's where we're slowly seeing a deficit increase year-over-year. If we were to use the exact same cost per ride this year as compared to that 2011, our mobility costs went from 1.2 million to 2.4 million. Without increase in funding, we have to cover that out of capital expenses that we're not allowed to use now towards buses, ADA-accessible stops, any capital improvements. The Connect Mobility Service, this is a slide that Teresa had up there, just showing the cost difference. So demand response at the top, that's your paratransit, costs about $5.88 per passenger mile. Fixed route only costs about $1.37. Again, this just shows that it's more efficient to move more people all at once. Similar to, you know, if you order on Amazon Christmas shopping, you should be shopping local, but if you order on Amazon, you want to combine all those packages. It's the same with transporting people. If we're able to get lots of people on the same bus, that cost is way down. This is our Connect Mobility Service area. The light highlighted area in the very center, this is the three-quarters of a mile from every fixed route. This is what's mandated by ADA guidelines. Those additional red areas on the outside, those are the premium areas that our Board of Trustees has adopted. We are not required to go to these areas, however, it was adopted that we would provide service in these areas. Since it costs more to go further out on the periphery, we do charge a premium rate for these areas. Connect Mobility and Medicaid. We helped the YWCA. YWCA was struggling to keep their medevan service afloat. We helped for a while to help lobby them to find additional funding through private investors, through community support. Unfortunately, they were not able to recoup the costs and cover that service. They ended that in summer of 2017. Many of those riders, we took on to the service, we helped them with their applications, and gave them a buffer time, basically, to use our service and, and get adapted or find other means. This got us to thinking, why aren't we accepting Medicaid as a transportation provider? We reached out and found out that Rockford does a little on the county side. Besides that, no urban transit in Illinois is a non-emergency medical transportation provider, except for Connect Transit. We were approved, approval took about eight months for the whole approval process. Before we fully adopted it through the state, we actually had to fight legislation that was coming into the state that wanted to put an increased burden on the rider, that would have made it very difficult and very, very time-consuming for them to access these services. We were able to track them down with the help of our Illinois Public Transportation Association and our state lobbyist. We found who is responsible for the bill and gave them our insight, and they changed that before it went into effect. Once that went into effect, we were able to fully staff that position, and that's when the real work started. We went after Molina. Molina is another provider in the state. It's called an MCO, a Managed Care Organization. We were just approved by them in July, so we're going to start rolling that out here shortly. Unfortunately, again, we had some staffing issues and we're actually hiring a new person for our Medicaid position. Right now, with Molina, there's about 9,000 residents in McLean County that have Molina and could possibly use those for transportation. We are currently aware of 150 that are on our Connect Mobility Service with Molina. The customer benefits from us accepting Medicaid are, all qualified trips are 100% free to that rider. They're available to any rider, even those in the premium zone. In the last seven months, we've provided 5,000 rides, and at the $2 fare, that's a savings of $10,000 in seven months for our riders. Our top user took 300 trips, so they saved at least $600 in seven months because of that. The benefit to Connect is we get paid based on pickups and mileage, which can vary from $10 to $20 per trip, which is a much better reimbursement rate than $2. $10 to $20 per trip, which is a much better reimbursement rate than $2. The fixed route and fare comparison, so what we're looking at is our regional peers here in Illinois. We have Springfield, MetroLink in Rock Island, Peoria, Champaign, Decatur, Danville, and Rockford. Many of these, you'll see that the one-way fare is $1. Springfield is at $1.25, and Rockford is at $1.50. We have a proposal out there that, in acceptance, that in January, our rates will grow up to $1.25, and in a few years, up to $1.50. What I want to point out with this list is that Rockford Mass Transit is the only one that doesn't have a dedicated funding through some sort of tax revenue. So they're paid or funded similar to Connect Transit, and they've been at that $1.50 for about nine years now. Each of them do provide some sort of 30-day pass or bulk trip purchase. It's not standardized, and they kind of have a variety on each one. For the paratransit comparison, the, just to let you know, the one-way fare for paratransit cannot be more than double what the fixed route is. So as you see, those five still have a $2 paratransit fare. Springfield has a $2.50, and Rockford has a $3 fare. Many of these do offer a bulk ride fare, however, they don't discount it, and zero of our regional peers offer a $30 pass. This is one of the reasons why we proposed to eliminate the $30 pass, or 30-day pass, is it's an unlimited ride that incurs a cost every time it's used. It's a great service, it's a great benefit, and if we had the funding to support that, then it's a great pass to keep. However, at this time, we incur additional costs, and there's no way to sustainably, you know, keep that fare going, or keep that unlimited 30-day pass going. As far as mobility trip frequency, so again, kind of looking at the 30-day unlimited pass, vast majority, it would not benefit, so they don't have the option of purchasing it or utilizing it to its full potential. About 80% don't have that option. The break-even for that pass is 32 rides, so as you see, only about 20% could utilize it. With the introduction of Medicaid, many of those rides are now going to be free, so that's going to reduce the number of fare or paid rides that they would actually be taking. And then the monthly pass is currently not available for the premium zones. So the value card that we proposed would be able to provide a discount to all of our riders. And I'll pass it back over to Isaac.
Next up is bus stops. So we installed bus stops at all of our bus stop locations, starting in 2014. This gives a customer a better idea of, well, they know where to stand when you install bus stops. So where to stand, they know where to get off at. It also keeps the bus routes on time. Prior to 2014, we did not have fixed route stops. Our on-time performance was around 72% to 74%. Today, it's now at 94%. So the customers know the bus is going to be reliable, it's going to be on time, and that's very, very important for individuals trying to get to work, medical appointments, school. Stops have a spacing of quarter-mile. That's the industry standard. As Teresa talked about, the FTA has listed a quarter-mile to up to a half-mile spacing for your stops. We use the quarter-mile spacing. For half-mile stop spacing, if you have five- to 10-minute frequency, people will be more willing to walk a half-mile to that higher-frequency bus network. And then reasonable modification. So all of our customers have the ability to request a reasonable modification under the ADA law. They can contact us and ask the bus driver to move slightly from the bus stop area. If there's any kind of obstruction or whatnot in that area, we will be able to do that through reasonable modification. Then the bus stop improvement process, so this actually started under the Better Bus Stops campaign, but we took this to the Connect Transit Advisory Committee to get their feedback on what our prioritization list should look like for bus stops. And we used our bus stop data, passengers getting on and off, to prioritize our stops. So once we prioritized our stops, we didn't take those site drawings to an engineer here locally to draw up the site plans for every single one of those stops. We then, after that, had to go through the permitting process. So those stops then go to the City of Bloomington Engineering Department, they look at that to make sure they're all ADA compliant, that we're in the right-of-way, and then they issue the permit. If there is an issue, we have to go back to our engineers and fix those. And then the next process after permitting is, if we're trying to install a shelter, it needs to be inside the right-of-way. Otherwise, we need an easement agreement from that private business or property owner to allow us to put the shelter in, because the shelter typically goes behind the sidewalk in areas where we don't have the right-of-way. And then the next step is construction. And we know that we live in Illinois, we have four seasons, so we typically have a six-month construction window to get these bus stop improvements done. So it can be a very long process, going from site drawings, permits, to easement agreements, and then actually getting the site constructed. And the Better Bus Stops campaign, this is, again, an effort the Board approved in 2018 with the help of Connect Transit Advisory Committee. The Board is committed to at least $880,000 making bus stop improvements. This slide is incorrect. It should be, we have 21 bus stops improvements through FY19. Like I said, our engineers now have 53 more bus stop improvements that they're working on to get those permitted. So we're hoping to get at least 20 bus stops done over the next few months, moving into the spring, to finish those out. And we have over 120 bus stops scheduled for improvement over the next two years. We have learned a lot through this process in terms of how the permitting process goes, getting site plans, and we're going to be meeting with city staff and engineering department later on this year for 2021 bus stop improvements to try to get better coordination on when they're resurfacing and then to add sidewalks. Because one thing that we're lacking at, I think, 70 different stops is actual sidewalks. And we can't improve the location without sidewalk, because our ADA compliant pad goes from the curb to the sidewalk. We're also applied, we've also applied for bus and bus facility. It's a federal discretionary grant program. We applied for over $500,000, and we're wanting to leverage Illinois Department of Transportation Downstate Operating Systems Program for another $900,000. That would give us about $1.4 million to do bus stops improvements. Again, though, even if we had that money here today, it's going to take at least two, three, four years to get all our bus stops to be ADA compliant. And we have to work and coordinate in partnership with the city and town to ensure that we have sidewalks where our bus stops are. So the challenges, as I just talked about, the lack of sidewalks. That is one of our big challenges. We're, the reason why we're moving quickly now to get our 2021 list done is because we're facing lack of sidewalks in many, many different areas throughout the city, the town. And some of those, we'll even have to coordinate with Illinois Department of Transportation, because the city also doesn't own the right-of-way in those areas. The second issue is pedestrian crosswalks. Again, we don't regulate or approve pedestrian crosswalks. We have to work with Illinois Department of Transportation, City of Bloomington, and Town Normal to get those completed. And then maintaining the bus stops. It's very easy for us right now, in these warmer months, to go out, clean, get rid of the garbage at bus stops, but when we get three to four to six inches of snow, it's going to be very, very hard for us to come out and maintain these when that happens. It may take us a week to get all of our bus stops shoveled. And then the other problem, the large problem, is Connect Transit, maintenance staff has cleaned the shelter area out from snow, but the entire sidewalk is still, you have three, four, six inches of snow on top of it. How is anybody going to actually utilize the sidewalk to get to the shelter? So we are looking for partnerships in that as well. Other areas, other communities have done partnerships where people will go out and volunteer to remove sidewalk, remove snow from sidewalks. So we will continue to explore those opportunities. Then land use development. Again, Connect Transit is in a partnership with the City of Bloomington when it comes to land use development, when it comes to complete street policy, when it comes to zoning. All of these policy decisions go to the City of Bloomington Council to make those decisions. That Connect Transit does not have a say in. But they either hinder or help Connect Transit when we're approving complete street projects or land use lessening sprawl. All those items reduce our costs and help us better serve transit-dependent populations and individuals. So through the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, Short Range Transit Plan, they have obviously designated major and minor transit corridors based on transit usage. So what's very interesting about these major and minor transit corridors is, of our 2.4 million rides that we provided last year, 70% of those rides came from six routes doing service on those major and minor transit corridors. Those are very, very key to our success. And then Teresa also talked about this, partnering with local municipalities to help and implement programs that enhance multi-modality of streets. So again, it goes back to sidewalks, bike paths, complete streets. All these items help or hurt Connect Transit long-term to ensure people can get to the bus stop safely and utilize it. And as Jeff brought up, every bus stop that we improve, we're going to see more ridership at that bus stop, because it's easier to use, they actually have a place to wait for the bus. So all those items help. In terms of new developments, anytime a new development comes, whether it's a business or housing a project, all those items go to the City of Bloomington for a permit. Connect Transit usually does not find out unless it's through the paper, or in very rare cases, they actually reach out to us and say, hey, transit is important, we want you to be involved in this in the planning stages. And typically, we don't find out, like I said, until later on. We're way past the permitting process, we're past the planning stages, and they come to us and say, we want to have transit here. Or we go to them and say, have you thought about how transit or customers are accessing your building? So we want to get in early, in the early stages and be part of the permitting process, have something on that permit that says, have you thought about transit? And have some questions about transit in terms of sidewalks, walkways, shelters. That would be a huge improvement for us, because when the construction's already started or the planning has already been done, we go to them and ask, have you thought about transit? They say no. It's very, very expensive for them to change their plans or the construction to make sure they have a shelter or walkway to their building. Again, infrastructure costs are very expensive at the later stages. Now I will turn it over to Martin to talk about electric buses.
So we ran out of time. We have three slides.
Go for it.
All right. Okay, so electric buses. Connect Transit issued a request for proposal that we should be getting back at the end of this week to purchase 12 electric zero-emission buses. These buses will replace 10 buses that are 16 years old and used. We'll be running these until we have all those replacements, so they're going to run another four years. Useful life of a bus is 14 years, and we're going to run them 20. These are 10 of the buses that are out there on the street at this time. The, how are we paying for these buses? Well, Connect Transit was first awarded a low or no emissions discretionary federal grant for $1.45 million. That was for an electric bus and solar array infrastructure. Connect Transit then additionally won another award for $6 million discretionary federal grant for bus and bus facilities. Both of these grants are discretionary, which means that they get to pick them based on criteria that they feel is appropriate. So you have to appeal to those that are issuing the grants and what they're looking for. The, about $7.5 million that we got in grants, we will actually leverage IDOT funding to nearly $21 million for the 12 buses, as well as infrastructure, and partial, partially paying for a possible downtown transfer center, which Isaac will talk about. So for these buses, zero local funds will be used to purchase them. They will all be federal and state funds. The electric vehicles are backed by the federal government and by the personal car industry, Ford, Tesla, Rivian. They're really pushing the electric vehicles, which means infrastructure and costs and support are going to be much cheaper, much more widely available for this type of, this type of fuel and, you know, there's CNG, there's propane, there's hydrogen. Electric is the one that is most widely adopted. They have a much lower operating cost than the diesel buses. So on average, we've calculated that they should save us almost a quarter million dollars over the lifespan of that vehicle. That includes the purchase price, as well as the continued operating cost to run that vehicle. The fuel costs are much lower as far as the electricity is concerned. The preventative maintenance costs are much lower. There's no need to change the oil, there's no filters. The brakes and tires actually have extended life because there's regenerative braking, which recharges the battery without you actually using the brake. So there's many different components that are different with the electric vehicles. The battery electric vehicles are also an environmental benefit by reducing fewer greenhouse emissions.
All right. Real quick about the downtown transfer center. I was in front of council, I think, over 19 months ago, to talk about downtown transfer center and the fact that we had won an IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation grant to perform the feasibility study. We have finally secured the approval of IDOT, and we are moving forward with it. We released the request for proposals to hire a firm a couple weeks ago. We should be getting those back in the next two weeks. We're going to be looking at different site locations in downtown Bloomington, four to maybe five. We have met with city manager Tim Gleason and staff to talk about a few locations here in downtown Bloomington. The reason why we need the downtown transfer center is because we have 1,800 boardings a day at the Front Street location. It's our second major transfer center in Bloomington-Normal. Many of the people in downtown Bloomington live around this area, and they actually walk to the transfer center on Front Street. It lacks proper amenities and infrastructure there, such as shelters, lighting, places to sit. So as you know, in the summer, when it's very hot, we put a cooling station out on Front Street for our customers. And in the winter, when it's very cold, we put a warming station out there, because we lack the proper infrastructure at the stop. The safety concerns, we have buses on North Front Street and South Front Street because we lack the space requirements for eight buses. So we have people most of the day that walk back and forth on Front Street to catch a different bus. And then also, obviously, the lighting is a safety concern as well. Makes some people feel very unsafe because it's not well-lit. And the last item is, we're going to be investing up to $10 to $14 million in downtown Bloomington. There's a lot of economic development opportunities that could be spurned by this, us being able to build this. And we have the majority of the federal and state fundings to be able to build this. We're looking for an actual location to get it done. And next, I will bring up trustee Judith Buchanan, talk about the Connect Transit Future Working Group.
Thank you. I wanted to share briefly with you, because I know we've exceeded our time. The members of the Connect to the Future Work Group, there are 13 volunteers from throughout Bloomington-Normal. They represent a cross-section of our community. We have a driver who's a member of the HU union and on an executive committee. We have riders of both the fixed routes and the connect mobility. We have the business community represented, healthcare community, advocate for people with disabilities, a member of the Connect Transit Advisory Committee, representative from Illinois State University, and two Connect Transit trustees. In addition to that group, we have added what we are calling subject matter experts. And these are individuals with some specific expertise and experience that could serve in a resource capacity. We have the LifeSail Executive Director joining us for that conversation, the Bloomington Director of Economic Development, Melissa Hahn, the Town of Normal Planner, a Regional Planning Commission transportation planner, and that's Jennifer Six, and there are some others to be engaged. In addition, we have Isaac Thorne and Martin Glaze with us for support and resources. The group is meeting monthly and has been since June. Small groups are meeting in between, so we recognize we have a fairly aggressive agenda and timeframe, and we're taking it seriously. All of our meetings are open. We do comply with Open Meetings Act, and we do recognize public should they be there to comment. Our work is being facilitated by Smart Growth America, and this is a firm that has worked nationally with transit systems and transportation departments at various state levels. So they are coming in to facilitate the conversation, and that, we think, helps us ensure some transparency, as well as the global look that we're looking for. The purpose of the group is to engage the community in questions that have been raised relative- The purpose of the group is to engage the community in questions that have been raised relative to the central role of public transit in Bloomington-Normal. You know, it was about a year ago that our trustees began a discussion as we were looking at preparing budgets again and the trajectory of our ridership going up, the uncertainty of some of our funding sources. And that has kind of morphed now into, earlier this year, there was a great deal of conversation about transit. We heard from our mobility riders and others. And so it has given us an opportunity to really pull that together, but this has been something in discussion for a while. We're going to gauge what value this community places on public transit. We're taking a deep dive into Connect Transit operations. In fact, I might mention that the fare cap has been approved by our board. We're waiting until the first year as we revisit the fare increase. But the purpose is really part of the foundation. It speaks to the strategic plan, and that is that Connect Transit exists to focus on funding and designing a sustainable system to optively serve Bloomington-Normal. In sum, really what we're hoping to accomplish is to ask our community, what you want from public transit? How do you want to get there? How are we going to fund it? And how are we going to sustain it? To that effort, we have, after a fairly lengthy brainstorming session with all of our focus group members, we have identified four focus groups. They will inform the recommendations, they will reflect best practices. We're looking nationwide at communities of similar size. Many of them have faced the same challenges we faced, so we're looking at those, and some of those people are going to be participating in our discussion. We will be really drilling down on that. Each group will report back to our larger group, but it will be an integrated report. Recommendations will come together via consensus of our group. The four focus areas, I would let you know, are ridership and access, a lot of what's been talked about this evening, integration of public transit into land use and development. As we continue to talk about it, we discover more and more maybe missed opportunities that we can take a look at that could help us. Sustainable funding, that's the big elephant in the room, and connecting to the future, Connect Transit as an economic partner. So we do expect for the group to have come together through the end of this calendar year. I think initially we might have been talking about something a little bit sooner, but as you might imagine, at this point, we have bitten off a fairly large task. And we do expect, though, in January, to have recommendations for our stakeholders, our city councils, our advisory group, and eventually they will go back to the Connect Transit Board for implementation. So that is what I have to say, and we would be welcome, you know, to answer any questions.
I'm sure there will be some. Okay. At this point, we'll move to the council discussion portion, and council members. Councilmember Painter.
I have a question about qualified Medicaid.
Yes.
Does that mean that everybody that has Medicaid is qualified to get assistance?
I'll have Martin Glaze come up and answer that question.
Thank you.
So as far as MCOs, there's about five of them here in Illinois. Currently, we only are partnered with Molina, and then we're partnered through the state itself. So those other four we're currently not partnered with. They're the least used, but they have the most restrictions or most qualifications that they're requesting of us for application. So we're continuing to look at it. Some of them are very high and burdensome, so we're evaluating that still.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Carrillo, you're about to, yeah.
Yeah, I want to go back to the, maybe the slide about the accessible stops. Can you tell me, what is the total number of stops that are encompassed in the system?
Yeah, I do believe there's 500, is that correct?
Four, about 478.
478.
478. And so right now, how many of those are accessible?
I'd say about a quarter of those, or 30%,
Depends on the level. Depends on the level of accessibility. Much of the improvements that we're currently doing to the stops are taking some that are accessible stops, however, we're making them better. A landing pad offers a quicker transaction between person getting on or getting off the bus. They're able to stay in the lane properly, they don't have to get into a crosswalk, they don't have to go into, you know, where the curb cut is. So many of the sidewalks still have curb cuts, which make the stops ADA accessible, they just don't have a pad. So there's about 70 stops that have absolutely nothing, no sidewalk, no pad, anything of that nature. So those are kind of hands-down not accessible. The other ones, it's kind of a level of accessibility.
Right.
So most of them are accessible to an extent, they just sometimes require a little modification.
Yeah, and again, I'm not necessarily looking for, you know, a number that I'm going to quote you on later, but just like, you know, I have a grandma, she walks with a walker or with a wheelchair. So like, what percentage or what number of stops, like, are stops that my, that you would put your grandma on, or that you'd say, grandma, go to the bus?
Those that have some sort of curb cut or some sort of access, you're probably looking at about 3/4.
3/4 of them, okay. And then with the plan over the next two years, what does that bump us up to?
So the hardest ones are those 70. It's those ones that don't have sidewalks. Those are ones that we're in talks with both the city and town and discussing, is this on your radar, is it not? As streets are being redone, we may, you know, prioritize that a little further in the future and allow the city or town to develop that as they're going through, or we may come in and do it first, and then they kind of connect to it. But again, many of these, we're taking the most utilized stops and prioritizing those first. So there's ones that average no riders a day.
Right, right, right.
Those kind of go on the end.
Gotcha, gotcha. And let me just sure, make sure I wrote this down. So I think initially you had said about a third of them were accessible, or those were the ones that were inaccessible? I just don't want to get it backwards.
I would say about 2/3 are accessible, about a third are at the high level of accessibility that we want to get to.
Gotcha. Cool, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Councilmember Bowlin.
I do a lot of reading. You're in trouble. Well, on the one slide, you had 95% of growth, I guess, and that's over, since 2008. So you're steadily going up 1% per year, which is really pretty impressive. And then on another slide, you have $90 of cost per hour, and if you divide it by four, you'll end up with 22 people on a bus at any given time. But you have 14 routes, so how does that break down? Because if I do the math for that, I end up with two people on a bus, which is what everybody in the community sees.
Yeah, so what you do is basically take your total expenses divided by your total ridership to get your cost for fixed route. And what Martin was saying is, we on average have 22 boardings per hour, but we also have 26 buses that all have 22 boardings per hour and peak service. So every one of those buses, because we're doing it by revenue hour, each bus represents a revenue hour, we have 26 in peak service, that means we have 22 riders per bus during those, those periods.
Okay. Now, is that overall through the entire system?
Yes. But, as I said before too, we had 2.4 million rides last year. 70% of those rides came on six routes. Those are the major and minor transit quarters.
On fixed route?
On fixed route, yeah.
Most of the riders from the community are students?
So 31%, I do believe 31% of our total respondents from our rider survey were students. Everybody else was non-student.
Well, I would venture to guess that there's a lot, particularly in Normal, and that's the propensity, and one of the slides has very heavy. And I also know in your online material that the stops in Normal, or at least, at least the stops that have a high propensity, you assign the shortest amount of time between.
Correct.
So high propensity would be seven to 15 minutes, something like that. Which of course, then it becomes chicken and egg, the faster there's the bus turnover, the more ridership you will have.
Correct.
So if that's taken into the account, if you're down in, you know, Normal downtown, the buses will be, still will not be that full because if it's coming every 15 minutes, you're going to end up with maybe 10 people on a bus. So, you know, I still am struggling, I don't believe that we need 40-foot buses if you do all the math, and at any given time, in the highest propensity, with 15-minute turnaround, you'll have 10 people on a bus, and then on the other side, there's two people on a bus at a given time. So...
Yeah, sure.
The math that I've done just supports a smaller bus.
Yeah, so here's our, here's our issue. I think some of it, it goes back to optics for people. Look, I see this bus, I only see five people on it all day long, so I don't think it's serving anybody. But again, if you go back and look at, and as I said, you have 2.4 million rides, six routes, 70% of the ridership for about 2.4 million, so I have six routes. Those six routes require 17 buses, 40-foot buses. They have our highest ridership, they have our highest boardings per revenue hour on them. We have 22 newer buses, and then as Martin talked about, we have 10 used buses that we purchased. We're going to replace those 10 buses with 35-foot buses. There's only one manufacturer right now that up, that up or makes a 30-foot bus. So we are going to replace those with 35-foot buses. That'll bring our fleet to about an average, pretty good split of 40-foot buses and 35-foot buses. Now there's, and then I want to be clear on this, there is definitely areas that you could run, you know, smaller connect mobility bus on, but you are going to replace those buses that are higher level than you are a fixed route bus because it's just not made for it. And there are also the kind of routes where you're looking at a much longer 16-minute headway route.
Well, then you start coming into return on investment.
Yep.
Because of all the infrastructure you're going to have to put in in order to support those electric buses and their large...
Yeah, and electric buses, like as Martin said, by buying one of those, even including the capital cost, over a 14-year period, we are going to save about $256,000, and we're being conservative with that number.
And what does that, I mean, does that include battery life and replacement and disposal and everything?
Yep.
Absolutely everything.
Yep.
I'm going to check your receipts.
Okay. And it really, too, included in that is, one of the things we're working on, we really want to be able to resell the solar infrastructure, or solar energy that we collect back to the utility company. That's really when you see a bigger return on your investment. So that's what we're also looking at. That's going to change our model a little bit in terms of what's the total cost savings over a lifetime of the vehicle.
I'm going to watch you.
Councilmember Crayville.
Hi, Isaac. Thank you for the presentation. My questions may go to different people. My first is on the working group. Is there any limitation in the scope of what they're doing or what the recommendations they can find?
Limitation, how do you...
Or, in essence, if they recommended, could they recommend a certain size of bus?
Judy, could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that that could well, I mean, they're looking at the future. They're not going back and looking at other's places, and maybe they're going to be looking at some with smaller buses, what has been their experience, what have been the costs. They're going to be presenting recommendations.
Thanks. And while they're looking at the future, you're also looking at the present and the issues in the present and try to fix those, right? As part of the working group?
Actually, trying to fix the present is, that's absorbed into where we are right now and going forward. If we do that right and have strong recommendations, that will, it should address the current problems. But our role is not to take the current problems, it's to look at, where do we go? And we go with those problems so that they will have to be addressed.
Do you get any feedback from any of the working group members as to how they think it's going, and if you have, can you share that?
We've got a very enthusiastic, energetic group, and Jeff, you've been at some of our meetings. There are no shrinking violets, and that's wonderful. At this point, I think when they came onboard in May, they were ready to go and jump into things, and so the feedback was, when can we get started? And this last Saturday, we started with the work groups. And two of the work groups have already come together with their people and their resource people and begun to look down into what can they do, what can they learn, both here and other places, so that they're prepared to start some work and come back with their recommendations. So I think once we got into the work, and the work's really going to be in those work groups, I'm sensing, now you may be hearing otherwise, but I'm sensing a higher level of enthusiasm.
Thanks, Judy. And so I was looking, I think, at the short-term transportation plan about the agreement with Lifesale that ended, and it sounds like they provided some pretty good data on mobility riders. Is there any plan to start a contract, another contract with Lifesale or someone else to provide the same data?
So what we, actually, our contract with Lifesale was more so on the ADA eligibility applications that were being submitted, and we did that process for, I think, three years. What we were trying to do is determine, are there individuals that don't necessarily need connect mobility that could be riding fixed route transit? And we went through that process, and there was very, very, very few people that did not qualify for connect mobility and absolutely needed the service. And that's still what we're seeing today now. Majority of our riders, we don't know, and I think this is in the Short Range Transit Plan, are ever going to be able to ride fixed route transit. There may be a few in certain instances, but the majority of those riders desperately need that service. They cannot walk the 500 feet or 200 feet, or some other limitation where they just cannot ride fixed route transit.
Are there any communities in Illinois that keep the same rate for fixed route rides, fare rates, and connect mobility rides?
So Illinois is a very, every agency is a little bit different. So some of the Illinois agencies, and even national agencies, they run the fixed route transit system, but they do not operate the ADA paratransit. And maybe a county that runs that. There are a few, I do believe that CityLink Emporia runs their ADA paratransit in-house. I think your question is, is the fare always twice as much as the fixed route?
Correct.
Pretty standard, yes. In Illinois that we know of, and the agents we show, we showed the council tonight, are all the agencies charge twice the amount of, for ADA paratransit service than they do for fixed route. And I can go back to that slide.
I saw that, it was, I just didn't know if there were any others that aren't on there that...
Not, not, not to my knowledge, it was charged differently. And then here's the other thing, you know, the working group is talking about, do we make connect mobility free? Is that something that the committee wants to do and supports? That may be something they're willing to consider and say, yes, we think that should be free. That's perfectly fine with us.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Black, and then Carrillo, and Matty.
I see that we've gone over our time. Would you like a motion to extend debate or conversation?
Since we have this, it looks like we're going to be more than a couple of minutes. Would you make...
Do you need that motion or no?
I'm looking for that motion.
I will take, I'll make that motion for extending the discussion by five minutes.
Second.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, second by Alderwoman Bray. At this point, if you'll just go ahead and vote. Motion carries, 9 to 0, no names to announce. Madam Clerk, okay, continue.
Thank you. So first off, thank you, and thank you for presenting, and I just also wanted to give out some thanks to the board members that I see here and the ones that aren't here this evening for the work that they've done, not only over the last few months, but also up until now. The only question I really have, because I'm going to reserve a lot of my feedback until after the working group comes back, is part of the conversation we had the last time we were discussing Connect Transit was about the intergovernmental agreement with Normal. Where are we at in that process? Is that going to come back as part of a working group recommendation? Can we do that in conjunction with or in spite of a working group recommendation?
At least as far as I know, in our discussions, we're waiting for the working group to see what, it would be premature for us to try to negotiate an intergovernmental agreement before the working group is finished with its work.
Sure. And I would just say, absolutely, I'm fine, sorry, Judy.
I want to share that in the...
Come up to the... Come up to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The working group does have a copy of that agreement, and that is among the resource documents we provided them, so that they have that piece of our operation as well. So again, we'll see, but they do have that information to look at, and there is some discussion.
Thank you. And I'll just say, from where I sit, I have a very keen interest in seeing that document upgraded and updated because of the ambiguity that has been created through a couple of things, as we've seen through the process in the last few months here. So, looking forward to seeing what the group comes back with.
Alderwoman, excuse me, Councilmember Carrillo, and then Mathie.
Just a quick clarifying question, because Councilmember Crable and Trustee Buchanan were having a conversation about the past and the future, it felt very existential. But my question is whether the working group is, in their scope, are limited in terms of considering alternatives to the fare increases and the elimination of the monthly pass? Because I believe we had a lot of resident feedback here, and we decided not to take action until the working group was complete in their analysis, but want to know whether you are sensing consensus around some directive or whether that's being considered at all.
Well, sustainable funding and ridership and access, we'll definitely be looking at that. Our board has also delayed taking formal final action on that until January, or at least after the first of the year, for that very reason. But we have two working groups, that that's part of what they're deliberating, is fares, is they look at, and some of them are, across the board are free, or they're dealt with in different ways, so it is on the list.
So it's possible that the working group will come up with a recommendation about some alternative, and that's something that the board would take into consideration before those go into effect?
Again, I'm not going to speak to what I think, I mean, what you and I might like them to come up with, but all that will go before our stakeholders, and then it will come back to our board. Understood, thank you.
Just to clarify, but there are no limits to...
Oh, sky's the limit, Mayor.
Okay, sky's the limit, okay. Okay, Councilmember Mathie.
Thank you. I think, thank you. I peppered you and beat you up with many questions over the years, and so I appreciate the fact that you've always had open, honest dialogue. You okay over there, Mayor? It's been six weeks, so. So one of the things that I heard you say tonight that I thought was interesting was that you wanted to be involved with future developments at a faster timeline, sooner in the process. And I think I had a conversation maybe with Ryan, or I don't know if it was Ryan or with you, that we were talking about some of the new developments on Washington Street on the OSF campus, that by the time the question was asked, how is this mobility going to play into this, they had already designed and started breaking ground, and it was too late. It was going to be very expensive for them to change directions at this point. So, you know, I really appreciate that you said that you want to be part of that process at an earlier date, and Tim, as I was thinking that we're working on this concept of one-stop-shop, that that's a new checkbox on that list of, does this development, how does our transportation infrastructure incorporate with this new development as we go along as well, right? So, I think that's just an easy add into the process to make sure that conversation is happening every time we have a new development that's coming forward for plan review and permits and stuff of that nature. That seems simple. We also have a sidewalks master plan, and you've talked about that there are 70 locations in the community that there are simply just no sidewalks to even get to those stops. Part of that sidewalk master plan has been putting a priority on places where we know that there are children walking to school and there's no sidewalks, and I think that maybe we can consider an amendment where we put that maybe an equal priority or a tertiary, secondary, however you want to phrase it, priority to say where we know that, from that list that LifeSail put together, we know that there are people with mobility issues trying to get to bus stops, we can prioritize some of those as well, and put that hand in hand. And then we work our way down the list of places where, you know, we know we have places in the community we have to mow your sidewalk every once in a while. But those maybe are not as simply as high a priority, so I appreciate that. As part of this conversation, we can start some planning internally on our side to make that happen even before we get to a January recommendation from the working group. The third thing I was thinking tonight is, and I had this thought when I drove by one of the upgraded stops the other day, is the upgraded bus stops are very clean, they're very pretty, and they, one of the differences I've noticed from other communities I've traveled in is, ours are the only ones that don't have any advertising on them. As much as I don't like advertising necessarily everywhere in the city, sometimes we have to be realistic about the revenue streams and how we're going to recoup some costs, and some of those stops are sitting on some pretty prime real estate. So I would like to see a plan where maybe on one side of it, we have a route map and information about the routes, and there could be information for the city of Bloomington, for Connect Transit, for what's going on, community calendar type stuff, and the other side could be advertising to offset the cost of the cleaning and maintenance of those stops that you talked about.
Absolutely. And I will say that we did have one advertising wrap on one of our shelters. The prime locations for most people, they want to be around the ISU campus, and that's exactly where it was. However, we would love to do more of that throughout the community, and I think you're absolutely right, we have to partner with the city in sponsoring whatever's going on at the BCPA, or whatever, whatnot that they want to advertise, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I was, I had the opportunity to go to Minneapolis-St. Paul area a few weeks ago, and the curse of being on city council now is that everywhere I travel, I'm looking to see what they do in all these different areas around their parks and their public transportation system and stuff, and there wasn't a single bench, and there wasn't a single shelter that I drove past that did not have some form of advertising to go along with the maintenance and support of the infrastructure. Other than that, I would say thank you for the presentation today, and keep marching forward, and we look forward to January to see what you guys come up with.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Alderwoman.
Yeah, this is really, in closing, it really is beginning to feel like a partnership, so I appreciate the time and conversation. For the record, could you tell us why the buses are the size they are? Like, what is the argument for what we have?
Yeah, so, again, going back to this, we did a RFP back in 2014. We did a joint procurement with 26 different agencies across, let me see, 326 agencies across 26 states or something. Anyway, we led this procurement, and we had the option for 30, 35, and 40-foot buses. Again, going back to what I said earlier, there's only one manufacturer that makes a 30-foot bus. Everybody's going away from that. One of the reasons why is, when we had our 30-foot buses, they're on semi chassis. Can you imagine running a semi chassis on a transit bus that stops every quarter mile for somebody? So, we spent about $50,000 a year on brake parts when we were operating our 2003 and '04 30-foot buses. So we couldn't wait to get rid of them and go to disc brake buses. So, we worded the contract and we purchased 40-foot buses because at that point in time, we were seeing our increase, I think that year was 2.6 million in trips. So we purchased 10 buses, and we continued to do that up to, now we have 22. Now, again, we have 10 used buses, that makes a total fleet of 32, 40-foot buses. Those 10 buses are going to be replaced with 12 35-foot buses. But the biggest reason is, 30-foot buses are only made by one manufacturer, and I don't want to write a single source bid for those because it'd be much more expensive. Yep.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, and appreciate all of your help.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I have a follow-up question then.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
So, thank you, and thank you for that, and for that question, Alderwoman Emig, because I just want to tease that out a little bit. So then, are we to understand that the Connect Transit Travel Center or the Bus Center will be designed for 40-foot buses?
Yeah, you should always design your transit center like that for the largest buses possible, because you just don't know. That transit center is going to be there for 40, 50 years. So, you want to build it for peak demand, just like you build your roads, you want to build that for peak demand.
But isn't there an intersection between some of the changing needs of, and the emerging, the changing needs of those that need to be transported, as well as the new vehicle delivery systems?
Yep.
That would cause that way of thinking to maybe be a little in need of refreshment? It seems like there needs to be an intersection of, what does the future of transportation look like before you build for 40-foot buses?
Well, so if you're speaking about autonomous vehicles, there's going to be autonomous buses at some point in time as well, so there's always that possibility. We don't know the time horizons, obviously, of autonomous vehicles. It could be 10 years from now, it could be five, it could be 20. But when that technology is there, the bus manufacturer industry, the bus manufacturers, they're already planning on and testing autonomous buses out in Arizona with a partnership with, I do believe, Arizona State University, I believe. So, they're looking at that as well. So, just because we have autonomous vehicles, we're also going to have autonomous buses at some point in time in the future. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again, appreciate it. Now we move, excuse me, to our next item, which is discussion, first presentation and discussion by new video gambling regulations. And I'm going to turn this over for five minutes to Mr. Gleason, and then five minutes to the city council, just to make it clear, this is only the beginning of the discussion. There is no action that's going to be taken, of course, this evening. There'd be continued discussion based on whatever feedback the council might give the administration. So I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was an area that there's been a fair amount of staff and elected time spent on this topic, and I felt that it was my responsibility to try to land on the, you know, nine, 10 differing opinions as best we can, and potentially, you know, get a yes vote out of everybody if this would come in front of council next week on August 26th. And we may not, but I guess I just wanted to share that that was the thought process behind the work and the document that I'm about to share with, more so, the community. As we promised, we would report back to them prior to council considering and taking action. So, that's exactly what we're doing. The moratorium's been in place for quite some time. A few months ago earlier this year, we were also tasked to see what comes out of the Spring General Assembly at state level regarding sports betting, regarding cannabis, and this is sort of the conclusion of all that work that we were asked to do. We believe that the document for council to consider next week would place, lift the moratorium, but place the cap of 60 establishment licenses. This allows limited growth based on restrictive criteria. Council can begin to reduce through attrition if desired in the future, and what I'm talking about there is, in some of the discussions with council, additional establishment growth might be driven by a reduction in the amount of video gaming terminals per establishment. But that's down the road potentially, but that is something that was discussed, and seemed to be a fair amount of consideration would be given of that. Number two, requirements for obtaining a video gaming license. Primary focus of businesses must not be video gambling. Mostly have been in business for at least 12 months prior to the application, or opening a new location based on the same business model that is verified over a 12-month period to meet the city's requirements. B, gross receipts from video gaming terminals shall comprise no more than 50% of total establishment gross revenue, and this is consistent with what we do with our liquor licenses. C, establishments must have at least five customer seats per video gaming terminal located on the licensed premise excluding terminal seats. Truck stops exempt from the city requirement. D, no new establishment may be located within a residential zoning district. Number three, set a cap of five video gaming terminals at each establishment, with the exception for large truck stops which could have 10 video gaming terminals. And according to the Illinois Gaming Board, the city of Bloomington has five large truck stops that would be eligible for 10 video gaming terminals per truck stop. Number four, promotion of addiction assistance and related resources, suggesting a sticker on each machine giving a hotline number for addiction services, and then also a whereas clause that would allow the city manager to explore potential partnerships with local service agencies. This was a topic, you know, that was discussed quite a bit, that we believe, and I think common sense would tell you that, you know, there is gambling addictions. But we also struggle locally with the public data that would support that. But we have the ability to address this possibly in the form of a sticker on the side of the terminal, working with County Administrator Camille Rodriguez to see if we could actually use the McLean County hotline number, and then that's a way for us to start generating local data. So it's sort of, you know, I guess killing two birds with one stone, if you will. But that also is something that, you know, that discussion's not complete with the county. That's ongoing with Camille. She was receptive to the idea, but there's some additional considerations. Number five, transfer of a license. City clerk can approve if all underlying requirements and conditions are met, and there has not been a lapse in operation for more than three months. Number six, change in location. City clerk can approve if moving locations and not within a residential zoning area. Number seven, sale of cannabis and any other gambling prohibited on premises, exception for sports betting at kiosks located within truck stops. And the last one, maintain existing fees in the amount of 500 per video gaming terminal, but add a new fee for large truck stops in the amount of 1,500 per video gaming terminal. Fair amount of work, again, you know, don't know that anybody completely agrees with this list of eight, but we think that we have a document that staff, which was Jeff Jurgens, Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus, that we felt potentially is something that council could agree to.
Okay, so at this point, you're looking for feedback from the council, especially if there are, I should say, points of contention that a majority of the council don't want on that, to bring to the council next week. So you want any feedback within five minutes?
I don't necessarily need to go around the dais, that's going to be entirely up to the elected officials.
Yeah, I wasn't going to go necessarily, because there are a lot of moving parts to all of that, and especially since we've got five minutes budgeted. If there are some other...
Nine thumbs up would be good enough for me.
Or even if there are some specific things...
An ordinance.
If there are also problems, that would be helpful for us to know in advance of voting on this. We'll start with Councilmember Black, and then Councilmember Carrillo.
Thank you, and thank you, Tim, for putting this together. I know that this has been a lot of time and effort spent behind the scenes in getting with different council members to get their feedback. I'll just continue to advocate for the idea that we have a lower fee for fraternal organizations and non-for-profits. I think that there's a lot of evidence to suggest that those organizations, like the VFW, the Hungarian Club, put that money into those organizations that do good work in our community. I'd love to see in any final draft that those fees are halved, or a lesser amount than the $500 per terminal.
Alderwoman Carrillo?
Yeah, I have a question about the five truck stops that you said would be qualifying. Did we identify what those were? Because I think last time we had the discussion, we could name three, but the other two were mysteries to us.
Well, we have, research indicates that we have five establishments that are licensed as truck stops by the state gaming board, and they are Quick and Easy, Pilot Travel Center, Hux Food and Fuel, Travel Centers of America, and Freedom Oil Company. All five of these establishments are over three acres, so they could still qualify as a large truck stop based on the acreage requirement. However, we do not have the data to verify if each sell more than the 50 gallons, 50,000 gallons of diesel fuel per month. That may be data that the retailers report to the city on their monthly motor fuel tax forms. We're not sure if the forms ask for the gallons sold.
Gotcha. And then I will continue to advocate, since we're doing that, for the fact that I think we should commit to actually, you know, putting some resources behind supporting those who are suffering from gambling addictions. It seems like the right thing to do, to me, and in terms of us not having exact local data, I think, you know, that's a valid point, but we can take a lot of national data and extrapolate it, and unless we're doing something radically different in this community, I don't see why those numbers wouldn't apply. I guess the other small thing, which is not a deal breaker for me, but I'm curious about why we allow for the sale of alcohol and video gambling... why we allow for the sale of alcohol and video gambling to take place in the same establishment, but then wouldn't allow for the sale of cannabis, which, you know, wouldn't be coming for many years in the future. So, it just seems silly to me that we are limiting that before that's even really a possibility and/or something that we've really discussed.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
The first question I have is, I don't expect any business to do this, but if there's a violation, would that be included similar to the liquor license ordinance? Like, what would happen if they, you know, didn't have the right receipts and that type of thing?
Jeff, you're talking like an auditing component to the 50-50 rule?
Right.
Yes. You know, that's actually on the video gaming terminal revenue, that's something that the city's going to do. We made a pledge when we increased to 500 per terminal that it'd be used for public safety, and that's going to be a component of that. So...
But if someone violates...
What happens if somebody doesn't meet that requirement?
Yeah, they have to have more than 50% revenue?
Right. They do now, and we did have one establishment that we would have yanked their liquor license if they didn't get it below 50.
Okay.
It was nearly 70, it was over 70 one day.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, that maybe this ordinance should match the liquor license as far as, you know, what penalty would be attached?
In the final draft, I mean, this was just a quick overview, but in the final draft, it will be similar to what we do with the liquor license.
And the other thing is about allocating funds for addiction. We already, the city already commits what is at a quarter of 1% to mental health. And from my experience, addiction is addiction, just, to be honest, I think it's a chemical imbalance, but addiction is addiction. So, if you call PATH or any other support organization, you would get support for gambling also.
Understood. 4B was, and that's the whereas clause under addiction assistance, just trying to land somewhere that everybody could potentially agree. And the whereas would allow, we'll direct city manager to explore potential partnerships with local service agencies. We also have John M. Scott, but it's something that this council, even though this might be the, you know, not the final form that some of you would have liked to have seen, felt that it was enough that, you know, we recognize that there's, you know, a problem. And it allows for us to fund if directed to do so.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes. First, I agree with Alderman Black's suggestion to create that caveat for those organizations that are donating. And I, this is just a question of clarification. I've been reading the state code, trying to make sure I understand it. Is it not true that we can allow up to six video gaming terminals in local establishments and then up to 10 in large truck stops?
That is true. And that's one that I felt there was strong consensus is not to allow the existing establishments that by the new law, state of Illinois, could have gone up to six video gaming terminals. We wanted to keep it at five. So, that's what's going to be included in the document.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that it couldn't be more than six and that you have done so for me. And then finally, I would just say that I think this document does represent a compromise that it reasonably captures the views of many differing opinions, and it's incremental progress, but it's progress. So, I appreciate that, that that's what we're trying to do to accomplish something. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, since we're several minutes over, can we have a motion to extend this by five minutes?
So moved.
No, moved by Councilmember Emig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Matthew. If you go ahead and vote, please. Okay, the motion passes nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. Let's see, who was next? Jamie?
I just want to say that I really appreciate the amount of work that you guys put into trying to pull all these ideas together. If we're saying that the things, the one thing that I would really like to see changed is I would actually like to remove the expansion of 10 to those large truck stops. And I think that we heard several community members saying that's giving the truck stops an unfair advantage over the local places. I know the counterargument for why we're doing it, but personally, I don't agree. I would like to see them regulated with the same number of machines that everybody else has. I think it should be equal across the community. So, that's my one thing that I would like to see changed. I don't know if I have agreement from anybody else on that or not, but otherwise, I'm happy with the majority of the rest of this. The big things for me was not removing any machines from locations that already had it, and also making sure that if somebody wanted to try to sell their business, that they were able to ensure a transition that would make sure that the sale of the business could happen. Those were the two big ones I wanted. So, but if we can get rid of the expansion of the truck stops, that would make me, that would give me a really happy place to be.
Okay. Councilmember Bray?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I would also support lowering the fees for the fraternal organizations and the charitable groups, as Scott Alderman Black laid out. And then second item, I guess I'll speak to, is this idea of the auditing feature of whether this 50% threshold is really, you know, what is that based on? Should it be lower than 50%? Because if someone is a business person and they have a viable business, then why do they need 50% to prop up that viable business if they really have a good business model and they're operating their business accordingly? I do understand costs and the like, but 50% is, you know, it's half a gambling parlor and half a business. And I'm wondering if there's, what data would support the 50? Maybe we could talk a little more about that. And then finally, this idea of the audit. So, there's been mentioned that if someone doesn't meet the threshold, whatever that might be, 40%, 35%, whatever threshold we agree on, what are the consequences? Because they have more than, you know, while they have a license at that particular location, do you pull the license for all the machines? Or do you, you know, what is the consequence? Or do you pull one machine or two machines? And, you know, what...
Just to answer that from the standpoint of liquor commission, where our current practice is, this is pretty much consistent with our current practice.
Yeah.
We pull their liquor license.
Yeah, thank you for that. But that's a different mechanism. This has to do with individual machines that are operating. We've allowed them to have five, let's say, at a particular location. So, is the consequence that every time you're in noncompliance, I just think we probably need to set out what are the consequences? Because the business community asks for that. They like to know what happens when this doesn't work.
Then, maybe I'm not understanding. What's the violation?
So, let's say that there's a threshold that they cannot have gambling constitute more than 35% of their revenues. So, let's say there's a threshold. So, now we have a right to audit to 35%. What happens when it's 40%? What happens when it's 50%?
Their liquor license is removed.
I understand...
Their liquor license is removed. Excuse me. Well, no, if their liquor license is removed, then they can't have gambling.
So, you're, but you're jumping to that, Mayor, and I think again...
No, 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 I mean, that's, it is the answer to your question, no.
Well, I understand that's what we do with liquor, but maybe that's not the very same solution that we do.
No, 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 I'm sorry. That's what we do currently with gambling.
But now we're revisiting everything. And so, do we want to revisit what are the consequences when someone doesn't meet the threshold?
Okay.
Do we want to do that? Because is, what are the consequences? Do we say you no longer have a license any longer and now those license, that license, those five machines all can go to somebody else who can file to get these? Or do they have a period to remedy? Or do they get, you know, one machine's taken away and then the next time, you know, all of them go? I don't know the answer to that. So, maybe we want to consider something like that. So, I'd be interested in everyone else's thoughts in that regard. And finally, the idea of the truck stops. When we talked about the truck stops, I think we thought there were three. There's now five. Allowing each one of them to have five machines really grows this industry and our community. And that's, when we know that there are already addiction problems, I just don't see that as a healthy, I don't know, a healthy development for our community. So, I would say let's leave the truck stops where they are as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Couple of quick comments. What I'm going to do is prepare fraternal, you know, just expecting that there's going to be an amendment called, prepare something, $250 for fraternal per video gaming terminal. Number two, truck stops at five terminals. Alderman, Matthew spoke of that. And then also definitely get into everybody's hands, the penalty component, you know, get that language to you guys so that you can consider prior to this making its way as an agenda item, well, Thursday. So, we're going to have a short, actually Friday, but we're going to have a short turnaround, but Jeff's working on this. This just was a quick overview document, but we'll get that in front of everybody as well.
And maybe on the last one, I know we've run out of time, but George, just sort of very quickly, you know, with the, do we, do we have any other options other than the ones that we've been exercising already? I mean, you know, in terms of, I mean, obviously, with the institution that you know what I'm talking about, we did give them some time to comply and they ultimately did, but the thing hanging over their head, of course, was that we would yank their liquor license and then they wouldn't have video gaming or a business.
Well, we had, we probably could have done a few things, but one thing we could have done is suspend the license, you know, so it's not taking it away altogether, but suspending it for up to 30 days. There's also the possibility of fining them for violating that particular part of the act, so it could have been a per diem fine. And it's possible maybe to have come to an agreement. We didn't have specific language, we don't have specific language in our ordinance that would require them to reduce terminals, but there could be a particular penalty that could have been imposed, and then in exchange for that, the agreement to remove a terminal so that they eventually came down to that underneath the required threshold, you know, was a possibility.
Thank you. Thanks again. Okay. So, oh, right, Alderman Moboka, Milwaukee. It's going to have to be quick or we'll have to stand...
Very quick. I mean, I think we probably should be a little careful to make too many changes. I think it took us a while to get to this point, so that's just a word of caution for the future. And I would say that I, that said, it sounds like double speak, but I would support reducing the number of video gaming terminals in truck stops as well.
Real quick, Mayor, I got a quickie. To Alderwoman Bray's comment.
Thank you.
You know, in the research, Melissa Hahn, Economic Development Director, did a fair amount of work on this as well, and some of the stuff that they provided, her team provided. Of the five that are licensed as a truck stop in the state of Illinois, I didn't finish this comment earlier, and I apologize. We only think two are hitting the actual 50,000 gallon per month threshold, which would make them eligible for the expanded video gaming terminals from five to 10.
Thank you. Very important. Okay. Thank you. All right. At this point, then, we move on to council initiatives, and we have a three minutes and three minutes. So, the feedback on this is just, is this a question that we want to talk about? So, Alderwoman, excuse me, Councilmember Carrillo, hit it. You got three minutes.
I'm going to see if I can do it under three. So, as you all know, this year, the state of Illinois passed legislation that allows for the legal adult use of recreational cannabis, starting on January 1st of 2020, which means we have a huge sociocultural change coming our way in just under, a little over four months. The last time something of this magnitude took place, I, you know, I would compare it to the repeal of alcohol prohibition back in 1933. And I am a little concerned because while the town of Normal is preparing to possibly address this with legislation in the coming weeks, we have yet to have a meaningful conversation about it as a body. So, I think there's some urgency in us starting to figure this out, but I also take pride in the fact that we do things different than our neighbors to the north. So, I'd much rather us get this right than be the first to do it. And for me, getting it right means putting people around the table, putting residents and elected officials and business owners and potential business owners and law enforcement and other stakeholders at the table to begin to plot out what this multi-year rollout could look like. And, you know, to be frank, I'm personally of the opinion that there's great opportunity in us positioning ourselves to be a cannabis-permissive community. I think it has the potential to attract tourists and visitors to our downtown and to raise revenue for projects that will benefit our entire community and will give us the opportunity to begin to repair past harm that has been done, particularly to communities of color by a failed war on drugs. Of course, the legalization of cannabis will also come with significant challenges, like figuring out how our local police handle intoxicated people, roadside testing, what our employee policy looks like as an employer, whether we want to do targeted zoning where all of the purchasing and consumption happens in the city. But I think that we can meet those challenges if we put our heads together. Finally, I know that there are still a lot of questions around the role of local municipalities in terms of what we'll be able to determine, whether we'll be able to play a role in influencing who gets a license for cultivation, dispensation, infusion, transportation. And it's rumored that the state will soon pass a trailer bill to clarify some of the murkier parts of the legislation, but I don't think it's in our best interest to sit on our hands in the meantime. So, regardless of to your opinion about how permissive or nonpermissive we should be, what I am asking fellow council members to consider tonight is that we give a clear signal to staff in our community that this is something that we're interested in moving forward. And one way to do this would be to establish a cannabis task force that can be empowered to explore the new legislation, seek answers to our questions around the role that municipalities will play, and make recommendations for local implementation that this body can then consider.
Wow.
Wow.
Two minutes, two seconds under budget. Wow. Okay. Just if we have some concerns or quick opinions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Bray?
Thank you for your enthusiasm in this, on this particular initiative. I would say that in the city of Bloomington, we have the great benefit of our ward system, wherein we have nine separate areas and wards that we all represent, and we have the ability to interact with the constituents in our individual wards and then come together, put our heads together, and then see what's, see where we can find common ground and meet consensus. And in addition to our ward system that we use to do that, we interact with our individual constituents, then we set about working with our staff through our three-in-one process where then we tease out additional ideas and, I guess, garner support for each other's ideas in that regard. To me, setting up a task force undermines what we already have in place as our process. And in fact, I think it, for me, I would see it as abdicating my responsibility as an alderman for Ward Nine to not interact with my constituents and get the information that I need from them in order to come to the table and share that with you. And I, again, finally, because of the nature of the Open Meetings Act, not everyone here could be on a task force. It would be a very limited number. And again, I think that that does not, that just doesn't match well this kind of initiative that would impact our entire city, and our ward system will, and our three-in-one system will serve us well, and I'll be voting no for your initiative.
Okay. We're not really having a vote tonight. This is just a quick, do we want this on, just in terms of the, it doesn't have to be this model, but the model we had with the budget task force, that we had with the downtown task force is we had three council members on that out of nine. You can't have more than, you know, three, but we comply with the Open Meetings Act. And then the council does obviously have to debate and go through those proposals anyway. If we could...
I'm voting no to a task force.
Or you're...
I'm voting no to the initiative to establish a task force.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. Very quick, Alderman Craybill? Yes, no?
I would say yes to the task force. I think we can do both. I think we can go to our constituents and find out what they think, get their opinions, board them on to the task force. We can do the three-on-ones. We can work with staff, certainly. But there are stakeholders outside of that group that need to be heard, and I don't think we always do a great job with that, and we create law that has unintended consequences. And the more people that we can, in essence, bring in the... And the more people that we can, in essence, bring in the vote, we'll get to the best solution. So I'll vote yes.
Okay, again, we're really not voting, this is just, this is whether to put it on to talk about it. We're starting to talk about it, just yes, no. See, councilmember Black?
Yeah, I agree.
Yes or no?
Well, it's qualified, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. The only way you can get my support is if it's, I would have to see in very short order, I flushed out, here's who the members would be, here's the objectives, here's the timeline in which we would be meeting and what the deliverables would be at the end of it.
But you're saying yes to continuing?
To put it on the agenda, okay. I'm assuming you're voting for your own?
Yes.
Okay. Or you're not, excuse me, expressing support, we're not voting. Councilmember Painter?
Well, I would say yes with the caveat that I don't think that this should carry the weight of the whole city, whatever she comes up with. You know, I think that, you know, if she wants to find out what the police and what the stakeholders think, that's great, but I don't want it brought to us in a way that we're going to have to vote on that or agree with that. I don't want it to turn out like the downtown task force did.
Okay.
Understand?
Gotcha. Councilmember Emig?
Yes, I'm in support of this initiative with the criteria that other people have already expressed.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawboy?
Yeah, I don't think I'm ready for that yet, because I'd like to see a little bit more, you know, of this, because I don't know which form this is going to take. You know, it talks about a, let me see, where is it here? Made up of one to three council members, multiple other stakeholders. And so I, you know, not look to law enforcement, downtown businesses, going to justice reform, so I...
Well, those would be the things we would talk about, no?
Yes, like, I don't know what form that's going to take either. It's the proposal that staff have, you know, the okay from council to continue going down the road exploring what this could look like.
Okay. But then also, what I'd like to hear as well, because I'm assuming, we all went to IML, right, and we heard about, you know, this coming down the pike, and I know staff usually doesn't fall asleep on things like that. And I, and my assumption had been that something, you know, is going to come eventually, but I, not to put the staff on the spot, but haven't heard about, you know, what staff's thoughts were on this and, you know, how we're going to approach this whole issue, if we could.
Yeah, okay, so that, okay. Alderman Bowlin?
I'm still unsure.
Unsure. I figured that, okay. Councilmember Bowlin?
I think Jen should do what she does best, and that's having listening sessions rather than a task force. Like Alderman Bray said, I do not want to advocate my position as a council member. I have seen over the past five years how task forces work together and the results that come out of them, and in my opinion, have not really been very successful. So I would rather the council deal with it after listening to the community, whether it's going to your ward or having open sessions.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew?
So I think this is something that we obviously need to talk about. My concern with the task force is not whether or not we should do it, my concern with the task force is whether or not it can be done fast enough. I was approached by a developer last week who wanted to know where the conversations were, what we were doing, because they want to open a location in Bloomington, they live in Bloomington, they want to have a location in Bloomington where their new business supports Bloomington, that any tax dollars go to Bloomington and not in a different community. And so my concern is if a task force could be organized, get the members put together, have the meetings, enough meetings to actually be relevant and have a result, and then report back to the council at a fast enough time period. Ideally, I would like us to have something on the books by the end of September, that's probably a pipe dream, pun semi-intended, but, but end of October, worst-case scenario, because if you're a business developer and you want to open something up, you need time to arrange locations, lease the staffing, business plan, marketing, and everything else. And if we could give somebody 90 days, that would be great, but if we're giving them less than 60 days going into the holiday season, that seems like a tough egg to crack for just about any business developer out there. So I do think it's important, I do think that we talk about it and have something quickly. We know IML has released a model to cities that, but I just don't know that a task force goes fast enough for what I would like to see happen.
Maybe, but it's got to go fast.
Yes.
Like, real fast. Okay, all right. I think we had one, two, three, four, five, yeah, we had five and six, maybe, anyway, so we can put this on to talk about, bring your ideas back, you have what you need as we go forward. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and now I'm going to turn it back to you, because you have a five-minute city manager's report, and then we're going into executive session.
Got it. I do have 20 items, minus 18, I have two, and they're both awesome. On August 26th, finish line is here for the Boys and Girls Club. That will be an agenda item for council to consider approving next Monday. Next one is tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, BCPA, hour and a half, meet and greet with the two police chief finalists. So if you're able to come, it, you know, I think the community is going to be impressed with the two finalists, very impressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. At this point, can we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons cited in section 2C1 of 5ILCS 120?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Craybill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Carrillo, if everyone will just go ahead and vote.
[inaudible].
Oh, and just so that those, if you want to wait around, you are certainly welcome to wait around, it'll probably be about 45 minutes, but we are going to do nothing else except take a motion to adjourn. That can be riveting, but just letting you know. At this point, the motion carries nine to zero, actually, we're going to go ahead and just take a very brief five-minute recess for a universal bathroom break.